Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 City Council Meeting of June 10th, 2020. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
And here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
And Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Thank you. Well, welcome to everybody. Thanks for joining us this evening. We're still under Governor Newsom's COVID-19 guidance, including the suspension of some components of the Brown Act related to meetings such as this one. And as such, Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Freeman are joining the meeting by phone tonight, and all council votes will be conducted by roll call. At this time, our Public Works Director, Nick Fidler, is going to offer the invocation, and then Councilmember Jackie Sullivan will lead us in the pledge. Would you all please stand?
Please bow with me in prayer. Heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you this evening just to thank you for the blessing you've provided to our community, Lord. I thank you for our community leaders, Lord. I pray that you guide them through the decisions they need to make during these tough times, Lord. I pray for those that have been impacted by both physically and emotionally from this pandemic, Lord. I pray that you seek them and gather them close to you, Lord, for comfort and healing, Lord, that only you can provide. Lord, I pray that we come to you, Lord, in division. Lord, you're the only one that can heal our nation. I pray that the decisions that are made during this evening's meeting, Lord, honor you, and they serve our community. Lord, I pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
And thank you, Mayor, for inviting me to lead the flag salute for our city council meeting, and beautiful flag and wonderful country. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which it stands. One nation, a drawing, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you, and you may be seated. We're glad to see all of you. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. In keeping with council policy, council members aren't allowed to send or receive electronic communications during the meeting. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but isn't allowed at other times during the meeting. And for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chambers. Madam Clerk, would you please read the first item?
Public statements.
Thanks. Due to the Governor's executive order, which waived the Brown Act provisions requiring physical presence of the public in light of the pandemic, public comments have been encouraged to be made by mail and phone call to the city clerk. Those received, as such, have been provided to our council already. So now we'll receive in-person public statements, and then public comments related to the workshop item will be received after the staff presentation on that item. All statements are given a three-minute time limit per person and 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk. She'll give copies to the council. Please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. Due to the public notice of the Brown Act, council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the public speakers tonight?
Mayor Go, I would like to announce that a staff memorandum has been received and provided to the council, transmitting public comments received through email and by phone. Any additional comments received by email and phone will be compiled and provided to the council and the public at the conclusion of the meeting, as well as made part of the record. We have four speakers this evening, all on separate subjects. The first speaker, Mitchell Rowland.
Just please introduce yourself and go ahead. Welcome.
Thank you, council members and the public. My name is Mitchell Rowland. I'm a member of the Public Services and Vital -- Public Safety and Vital Services Committee, Measure N Committee, as it's better known. And I'm here tonight to express that some members of the Measure N Committee are uncomfortable with the proposals by city staff to hire a lot of people in this next fiscal year, given the fact that we don't know exactly what our sales tax revenue is going to be. I think it's a time to be conservative. We've looked at the proposals that are before us, and I'll have to tell you that there were several proposals that were voted on by the Measure N Committee, and they passed by a five-to-four margin, and there were some that did not pass in a five-to-four margin. So please understand that, for instance, obviously, the committee -- let me back up for a second. It's my belief that the people of this city, when they went to vote for Measure N, these people who don't normally pass tax increases in this city, I had to stop and think, what's on their mind? What was a priority for them in order to vote for a tax increase? And the people that I've spoken with, I believe, can name two or three things that were prominent in the minds of the people that voted yes on this tax increase. One, they wanted to see more police officers on the street, because they weren't certain that if they went home and found their house broken into, that they would even get to see a police officer. Number two, they wanted the homeless situation cleaned up, because people were coming to work and finding people sleeping on the front steps of their business, and they wanted that taken care of. Economic development and city beautification and things of that nature, parks, were also on their minds, but I don't think those were the prominent items. So the Measure N Committee, or me, I'm personally of the belief that the focus should be on public safety, which is what the measure was promoted to be, and I think that we're getting a lot of proposals to hire staff for the city, various positions, technicians, mechanics, clerks, things of that nature, that were not a priority for people that voted for this measure. And those positions should not be funded out of Measure N dollars. For instance, there's a support services, non-departmental proposal of $4.6 million to hire people in the Finance Department, Technology Services, Public Works Department, Assistant Public Works Director, Administrative Analyst, Fleet Mechanics, Fleet Service Workers, Maintenance Craft Workers, and a grant program. Given the uncertainty of the funds that you're going to collect in sales tax revenue over the next 12 months, I don't think we ought to be hiring people, putting ourselves in a position where next year, we have to pay those people, and the year after that, we have to pay them. And we're going to hire a lot of police officers, and we're going to have to pay for those people over several years. If we keep adding staff, then we are going to get to a point where all of Measure N, $70 million, let's call it in funds, is going to pay for staff that we hired over the past three or four years, and there'll be nothing left for projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowland. Thank you for your service on the committee. I know that you are very diligent in reviewing your packet. We appreciate it. Next speaker, please.
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager, if you could consolidate a list. When departments came before us before budget, it was kind of, you know, piecemeal when they were talking about people they may be adding. So again, a consolidated list of all departments, and what that cost overall, and future projections going out with retirement, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Maricle.
Am I allowed to hand you this flyer to pass out to the council members?
Sure.
Thank you.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you. I'll get to that in my second paragraph. Thank you, Mayor. Backyard hens are known as the pet with benefits, and fresh eggs are considered nature's multivitamin. I am here tonight to share with you that many Bakersfield residents are actively meeting, planning, and working together to allow for the ownership of backyard hens. I am not calling them chickens, because we believe that roosters should be excluded. We are asking city council to expand the zoning to include R1 lots for backyard hens. My name is M.T. Maricle, and I am the current principal of Stockdale Elementary. I live in Ward 5. I came to Bakersfield on a wrestling scholarship in 1989. I have been married for 25 years, and I have two boys attending BHS. I share this with you to hopefully and quickly establish that I am a caring, positive, and contributing resident of our great city. I manage a website called Bakersfield Urban Backyard Hens. We have had 672 visitors to the site in the past three weeks. The website is a resource and support for hen enthusiasts in the Bakersfield area. I invite you to take some time to explore this site. While visiting the website, take the survey that is gathering informative data, and read my blog that is documenting the process of respectfully working with city government, invested community stakeholders, and residents. The data from the survey on the website shows the main reasons citizens want to be able to own backyard hens are food security, bug control, nutritious eggs, and pet companionship. I would like to extend my knowledge on the topic of backyard hens to you as a resource as we move forward with a plan to legalize hen ownership for R1 zones. You are welcome to contact me with questions and to request further information. Hopefully, you will be a supporter of this grassroots movement, and we will have opportunities to work collaboratively towards making backyard hen ownership legal for residents living in the R1 zone. Thank you for your time and for this opportunity to be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Maricle. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Julie Solis. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Julie Solis, and I live in Ward 2, just down the street. I'm here to talk about the upcoming vacancy and just to request democracy calls not for an appointment, but for a vote by the people. I also wanted to discuss our police department and the malice that they leave behind. Over and over and over again, people are dying. It would have been nice when you said prayers, if you would have prayed for all the moms that are crying from their children that were killed by your Bakersfield Police Department. It would have been nice when you prayed, if you would have thought about all the children that are left behind from these police brutalities. It would have been nice if, when you prayed, you meant it. You prayed for me, you prayed for the community. You don't do that. You're not sincere. When you prayed, I actually sent a prayer for you. We need body cameras on every single employee that carries a weapon, and not cameras that are controlled by the people that we do not trust. We need an independent oversight committee, because the public has no trust. Dead bodies keep coming up from your police department, and nothing is done. Police officers go to prison for a couple of years, three, four years, for pounds of drugs. If they would have been one of us, we would have been doing life. And when they get out of prison, they still get their pension. The pensions need to stop. If you went to jail, if you went to prison because you dishonored the oath, you should not be entitled to a pension. That pension is gone the day they decided to break the oath. It's disgusting how you guys do nothing for us. Invest in things for our children. Police Activity League. Why is nothing being done there? We wait until we put them in a bus, sending them to a prison before we care. They come out, they don't care about our children, the parks. When I go to Riverwalk, I don't see the same as whenever I come over here on the east side, when I come downtown, when I go down the street to my local park. We need to invest. We need a public database where we keep decertified officers. When they get fired from one force, they just switch to the next. When they get investigated in one, they move next door. That's how it works.
Ms. Solis.
And I do want to let you know, Mayor Go, that little boy, that little black boy that thought you were either a tourist or the photographer, he's black, and you know what? Black lives matter.
Thank you, Ms. Solis.
Don't thank me. Do your job.
Next speaker, please.
Tina Bengtston.
Thank you for having me, Mayor, City Council Member. I'm here because I live in Ward 1. Ms. Rivera has been our council member representing our area, and I can say, I've been back in Bakersfield for 16 years now, and he has been the first one that I felt has been sincere. He's given us direction, he's cared, and he's given us motivation as a community to do better for our area. Because we have that area I live in, I live right there on Cottonwood and Brooks, right near White Lane. I'm in the heart of what everybody sees as the danger zone. But you know, there's good people out there, and there's people who want to do better, and he's given us that guidance through, I'm with the MLK Community Infrastructure Team. So I've done some things that you guys have approved, and I appreciate the work that you will be doing, but I don't know your reasoning behind leaving, but we're going to miss you, and we appreciate you. And I hope that the person who replaces you will come with the same passion and understanding and guidance that you've given us. Secondly, I didn't put it on the slip, but I want to make sure that you guys know that the climate community we're here, and we not only need to be heard, as he directed us, we're going to be seen, and I've been here a few times, and will continue to be here, so that you can stay, keep us in mind when the funds are going out. Keep in mind that we are people, we have a community that cares. We just haven't had the guidance, or we haven't had the support that I feel that they need in that area. And so there's a whole lot of old politics, not only in the city, there's a lot of old politics out in the area living, because they don't believe that anything's going to change. It's been like this for years, I hear all the time. I knock on doors, I walk the block from date, you know, when I got off work, I'm out there to nightfall, because I don't know, because everybody, every, always says, that's the way it's always been. So I'm going to try to change that as best as I can, and I'm with his guidance from the other city members, different organization, the Planning Committee, Nina Carter, she's helped us a great portion on how to get things heard, and hopefully things done from it. And I just thank you again for all your help.
Thank you, Ms. Bengtston. Madam Clerk, do we have any others? Are there any people outside who just weren't able to get in? Is that all of the cards? Thank you very much. So the next item, please.
Workshops. Item 6A. Citywide Market Analysis and Economic Development Strategy, and B3K Prosperity Project.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Happy to present this workshop to the council this evening. I'm going to kick it off with some pretty broad-level introduction, and then we're going to invite our proposed candidate to come up, who would be providing the services of our economic development strategy, to walk us through more of the specific details on So with the creation of an economic development department, and with this particular item, there have been some questions about, you know, what is the role of economic development, and how does it compare with some of the other values that other institutions provide in our community? So if you'll reference the graphic that's on the screen, and you have it in front of you as well, but it's a little bit hard to see all the way up there. But there's one element of economic development that's really about strengthening local businesses, working on private investment, redevelopment, and implementing very particular local strategies. You also have a need to have major job creation, those entities that are going to go out and bring in really large employers, provide regional market information. It's also important to have partnership and connection, good information sharing, and advocacy on behalf of local businesses. And another element that is important is making sure that we're providing the workforce to fill those jobs, that folks are getting good job training and good workforce development. The different entities typically that fill these out, and this is how it's reflected here in Kern County as well, the Kern County, or the Kern Economic Development Council, they're responsible for this major job creation. They go out and they try and get big numbers of jobs with big employers. The Chambers of Commerce provide a lot of that information and connections, as well as they advocate on behalf of local businesses. Your county workforce investment board is largely responsible for spending state and federal dollars towards workforce development. And the city, where we have not had the ability to play this role, but now we have this new opportunity, it's really a city economic development department that focuses specifically on those local strategies, support to local businesses as far as incentives go, as well as trying to get redevelopment and private capital coming into the city. There is one additional element that I think is relevant for tonight. What about some of those community development factors? Some economic development strategies that are based on equity and inclusion? How do we connect to the education providers out there, our county superintendent of schools, and our trade associations? Also, how do we connect to community-based organizations and nonprofits? Thinking about place-making and land use development in the economic development context, issues around advocacy, climate change, and this last bullet, creating a civic structure for inclusive economic prosperity. This goes beyond what's typically done in most institutions around economic development, and I would submit that community development really needs to be at the heart of bringing together the different elements that can be deployed around economic and community development. What's interesting about how we're proposing our particular economic development department is that not only are we going to have a smaller team doing this very focused private investment and redevelopment work, they are also going to be tasked with homelessness, affordable housing, urban renewal, looking at enhancing our income distribution patterns, as well as tourism and events. So our economic development department will not just do economic development, they're going to have these five different components we talked about in the workshop, community development, homelessness, the CVB, and our arena contract as well. So thinking about economic development, again, in the broad context, it's an important time for the city to start playing a more active role in the local strategy around economic development. And so I'm going to invite Roger Dale to come up from the Nattlesondale Group and talk about what are the specific deliverables from this strategy that we're proposing that will give us some very concrete tools to get at our work. I would say that the city issued a very strong request for proposals, from my, you know, perspective, the outside coming in, that it reflected best practices around economic development, that the Nattlesondale Group's a high-quality firm, and the product that is being proposed will have distinct deliverables, very specific actions, actionable plan, and value for this new department to be able to deploy our work moving forward. So with that, I will shift gears and ask Roger to come up and share his presentation.
Welcome, Mr. Dale.
Good evening, Mayor Go, members of the council. As Mr. Clegg mentioned, my name is Roger Dale. My company is the Nattlesondale Group, and I'm pleased to have the opportunity to be with you this evening to walk through some of the steps of our proposed project and answer any questions you might have about the process or the work products. Little background on our company. We are an economic development and real estate consulting firm, been in business 46 years since 1974, and some of the areas that we work with clients on include economic development strategic planning, target industry analysis, in other words, identifying the types of industries that are well-suited to grow in a particular community or region. Around that, business retention and expansion, attraction plans, employment growth, essentially. And then we often combine that with real estate development strategies, and along the lines of Mr. Clegg's opening remarks about the opportunity to merge economic development and community development, that's very much a part of the way that we approach these projects. We have done a lot of work related to the retail market and retail industry, which, of course, is a challenge for communities across the country right now, as that industry is repositioning, and it has implications fiscally, it has implications in terms of land use, and again, a good opportunity to think about combining the practice of economic development and real estate or community development. And a lot of our work involves structuring partnerships between cities and other public and private entities, and I know that is not a new concept to Bakersfield, and you've already enjoyed some of those partnerships, and that's something that we think is a strong component of these processes, to revisit those and make sure that they're as effective as they possibly can be. And just also mention that we do work nationally, we've done these types of strategies throughout the country, although we are based in California, and really are focused primarily in California. My background also has been with this firm 32 years, and have specialized throughout that time in real estate development and economic development. And along with the rest of our firm, I've had the opportunity to work extensively in Kern County and Bakersfield through most of my career, with a number of the cities in Kern County, with the county, and other communities throughout the Central Valley. We are very excited that this proposed project would be done in tandem with the BK3 project, Better Bakersfield, Boundless Kern, and I know that Nick Ortiz from the Chamber of Commerce is going to speak to you after I speak about that, so I won't steal his thunder, but I just wanted to talk a bit about how these two programs would connect. And I think, as I mentioned, we're excited about it, because the types of work that that program will involve will really make this project for the city of Bakersfield potentially much more effective and much more action-oriented. So, and I'm going to, again, just take some highlights from their project, and Nick will explain it in more detail after I'm finished. Our understanding is that the B3K project is essentially a regional focus, it's a regional framework for what they're calling the future economy for the greater Bakersfield area, and it will, it's exciting, because it will include national and international models and benchmarking in terms of best practices, other regions that would be aspirational models for Bakersfield and Kern County, and very importantly, from our perspective, an extensive civic engagement process, which is always part of our programs as well, but this is an opportunity to really leverage that and get that stakeholder input and buy-in that are so essential to actually taking a plan and making it implementation. that are so essential to actually taking a plan and making it implementation-ready. And a lot of that will focus around regional capacity building, and as Nick will describe, they've got tremendous resources that will make that a reality, but linkages to external resources that would leverage local investment in development and other economic improvement strategies. So it's very exciting for us because that is often the type of thing we recommend a community to do after one of our plans has been developed. Here, you're already doing it, so we can really be thinking in terms of what are the city's particular roles in that regional effort where you can best leverage your investment within that larger regional initiative. And so the column on the right of this chart shows the specific ways that our program will fit into that larger program. First of all, this will be focused specifically on the city, the city's geography, as well as the city government, in terms of your potential roles in implementing economic improvements in the city. We will certainly leverage the research and the stakeholder outreach that the other team is working on. And where we will supplement that or enhance it is we will get down to a more sub-area-specific level. So looking at a regional project, we're getting it down to the city-wide level, and also recognizing that there are distinct neighborhoods and districts in Bakersfield that will deserve their own strategies, their own resources for implementation. So I think that's where the value really gets added for combining these two projects. And we will ultimately deliver an action plan that's focused specifically on the city's roles, and a program for the city of Bakersfield to implement for economic development, recognizing that you have a new department, a new focus on economic development. It provides an effective framework for moving forward over the next five to 10 years. Some of the ideas that we have, and again, we're at the very beginning of the process, this is very preliminary, but things that we think are exciting or important about Bakersfield that we will take into account as we're doing our strategy and our analysis. First of all, we're all aware that this is a dynamic location within the central part of California, strategically well-positioned, and that's something that you have already leveraged or taken advantage of, and the idea is to find out how we can further extend those advantages. It's a community that offers not a trade-off between affordable and quality of life, but you offer both. And that's a tremendous asset, not only from a resident standpoint, but from a business or economic development standpoint. And there's certainly tremendous capacity for future growth in what is generally recognized as a business-friendly environment. At the same time, we all recognize that there are parts of Bakersfield that have faced persistent challenges, and things like high unemployment, underemployment on some of the communities, community safety concerns, aging infrastructure, aging amenities, certain neighborhoods need more attention than others, and there is a need to continue to focus on revitalizing the city's urban core. We know that through Measure N, the city potentially has additional resources to address some of these issues, and we're certainly mindful of the committee members' comments earlier this evening. And we would concur that because you have those resources, it's all the more important to very methodically program how those funds are used. And this plan is intended to provide a framework so that future projects can operate according to a plan with a long-term vision, and not just be random projects that are funded sort of on a one-off basis, but all consistent with a long-term plan that has achieved substantial buy-in throughout the community. As I mentioned earlier, it's one city, but there are distinct subareas and perspectives, and that will be picked up in the way we approach the analysis as well as the strategy. We, as I've also said previously, think of economic development in very comprehensive terms. It's not just about marketing. Marketing's an important part of the city's economic development program, but it also looks at what are the real estate resources or assets? What are the workforce needs? And how are those effectively integrated to create a place that businesses and developers want to invest? We're certainly aware of the new opportunity zones, the federal opportunity zones, and how those have the potential to create place-making opportunities, first, the urban core especially. And as I've mentioned several times, this whole process is about leveraging the resources the city might invest in economic development with other resources, private investment, and other partnerships. We know that as elected officials and as city staff, you have an expectation to deliver on economic development, and your constituents have, I would say, have a right to expect that. And we like to balance, in response to that, balance of strategy that allows for both short-term and long-term wins, if you will. Show projects that can happen, and be very visible in the community on a near-term basis, and show where investments are successful, but at the same time, keep those within the framework of a long-term vision and other investments that may not be as visible in the immediate term, but are creating a long-term capacity for future growth that takes the city to a new level in terms of its economy. And then finally, this process that we are talking about tonight originated well before any of us heard of COVID-19. But the obvious question is, how does that pandemic affect this type of a process? And I think all of us, communities throughout the country, are now trying to figure out what does this mean in terms of our long-term resilience and our adaptability as communities and as local economies, and those will certainly be factored into our analysis. We're not necessarily involved in the immediate response to COVID-19. This is a planning process that will take six to nine months, and many of those needs are more urgent than that, of course. But it, again, provides a longer-term perspective on how has the world economy really changed because of COVID-19, some ways that may be negative and some that might be opportunities, and how does that cause us to rethink the strategies and plans that the city has to avoid vulnerability to future incidents of that type. Very quickly, talk about our program, the work scope. It's a research, it's a balance of research and technical analysis with our understanding of best practices through our work throughout the country in economic development. And that issue of best practices is something that, again, will be integrated with the B3K process because there's a lot of insight from that team as well. Very high focus on stakeholder engagement, and it's important to emphasize that we are going to coordinate that closely with the B3K team so that we don't overextend the commitment of stakeholders who are participating in meetings and other outreach processes, that we're kind of doing that as a collective team. And perhaps the area where we will supplement that is more at the neighborhood level that we have described in terms of sub-area issues in Bakersfield. We will be in close coordination with city staff, as well as the council, throughout the process, both directly and, again, through the B3K team. And at the core of our technical analysis is a market analysis, looking at potential opportunities in terms of real estate development, also potential opportunities for industry attraction. And again, those will be both at a citywide and sub-area level. And the final product is really an action-oriented strategic plan, looking at Bakersfield's unique potentials within the region, stakeholder consensus, and also looking at regional, as well as global, influences on your economy. I've mentioned these things already, so I won't go into great detail now, but some of the background studies include an industry cluster analysis, basically looking at what your growth potentials are for different industries within the context of the larger region, and also within the context of Southern California, Northern California economies. Wanted to mention, one of our team members has expertise in the logistics industry and is especially interested in working with communities to develop the higher technology aspects of supporting that industry, which can be a growth opportunity in itself. And this will all lead to input to a marketing effort of what types of businesses should the city target, and how best to approach your message to them. Then the other aspect on the market analysis is real estate demand forecasts, looking at future demand for retail, office, industrial, and hotel land uses, seeing how those potential amounts of demand line up with your existing capacities and your zoning, and seeing if there are ways that that needs to be adjusted in the future. For example, if retail space is in many communities becoming overbuilt, there might be opportunities to repurpose that for other activities, housing, industrial, mixed use, and this would be an opportunity to revisit that based on market demand. And we would get that down to a site-specific level of looking at particular opportunity sites or areas for those types of development. The community engagement component, as I've mentioned, would include ongoing communication with city staff and coordination with staff. We've included budget for three meetings with the city council to report our progress throughout the process, a very focused and extensive stakeholder outreach process through the B3K team that we would work with them to develop. And then where appropriate, supplementing that with neighborhood or community-level outreach to define kind of ground-level priorities and initiatives. And then the final work product is the EDSP, Economic Development Strategic Plan, basically a prioritized strategy for action for the city's economic development program and department, including a business retention, expansion, attraction plan, a real estate development strategy, a marketing framework, and then I'll talk about that more momentarily. And then attention to what we call foundational elements, infrastructure, housing, workforce, all of which would be, I think, strongly supported by the regional B3K research as well, and brought into sync with those initiatives where appropriate. Really, the other key feature is to leverage the city's resources so you get more return on investment through partnerships or other external resources for investment. And we always include performance measures and timelines, so they've got a specific, trackable set of objectives and ways to measure them over time, and also ways to adjust the priorities over time as circumstances change. One of the things that I'll mention with respect to resources is that we will, as part of this process, be looking at other communities that might be models in some respects for this program, how they have, the level of investment and staffing they have for economic development, and how they funded it, and other ways that we might look at communities that in some respects would be competitors to Bakersfield, but might have elements that would be useful as best practices here. City staff shared with us that Councilmember Weir was very interested in the City of Ontario's program, and we're familiar with that as well. I think it is an impressive program, and that would just be one example of a program that we would use as a benchmark in terms of the way the messaging is done, the types of programs involved, as well as the budget resources that have been devoted to it. I mentioned that part of our strategy would include what we're calling a marketing blueprint, and we would actually be using a team member called the Golden Shovel Agency, based in Minnesota. And they are nationally recognized as a leader in marketing specifically for economic development organizations. And their work would include a website design brief, not actual website development, basically a concept for website development, and could be followed up later with actual build-out of the site. And again, I think the City of Ontario is a good example, but just one of many that we would show as potential models for Bakersfield. I think what we like about Ontario is it kind of lays out an effective message about why it makes sense to invest there. It also makes it very clear the resources that the city has, both in-house and through partner organizations and agencies, to support growth of the business community, and does that in a very compelling and easy-to-navigate way. So website development is part of this, but just the first stage of it, and we can follow that up later with actual development. There would also be content strategy for place marketing, citywide, as well as potentially at the neighborhood level, and then an initial 12-month marketing plan. And this also would be coordinated with our team, as well as the Chamber of Commerce and the B3K team, to ensure that we have a consistent message across all these initiatives that would confuse the outside investor. At this point, I'd be glad to entertain questions, and/or did we prefer to have Nick's presentation first and then go to questions?
If I may, Mayor and Council, I think it does make sense to have Mr. Ortiz come up and share how the B3K is complementary but yet distinct, and then we could field questions across the board.
Mr. Ortiz?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. Nick Ortiz, representing the Greater Bakersfield Chamber. I think this is my first public speaking in about three months, so take it easy on me. I haven't been in self-imposed quarantine. My only public speaking has been to a seven and an eight-year-old, trying to teach them basic math. But I'm here tonight to talk about a Better Bakersfield and Boundless Kern, or what we are kind of shorthanding lovingly calling B3K, which is our Inclusive Economic Development or Deep Prosperity Project for the region. We've talked to some of you throughout, whether it was in the development of Measure N or throughout last year, about the need for a more comprehensive focus on economic development. And I really appreciate, not only the council's direction in terms of the council priorities that have really laid out economic development as an important asset that the city needs to develop, but also the really thoughtful work that city staff has done around not just Mr. Dale's presentation and that strategy, which we obviously fully support, but the really methodical way in which they've thought about how they change even the structure and staffing of the city to greater effectuate economic development opportunities and return on investment. So I'm going to go through our slides, and like we said, we will be glad to answer any questions about the program and the project. So one of the things that I think we can all agree on right now is that our region is at a turning point, and that was true even before the pandemic. We are, in a sense, kind of a tale of two communities. Sorry, should I pause? Sorry. A tale of two communities, a tale of two regions. You know, if you have heard me do a presentation about branding and the regional branding project, you have seen this slide, so I apologize. But we really do boast these economic superlatives. You know, when we talked to our consultants at Northstar that helped the city and the county, the EDC and the chamber, kind of developed this regional brand, they said they had never seen a brag list like this since they worked with the entire state of Florida. They are not aware of a region that has these economic superlatives, whether it is our resources, whether it is the affordability and the opportunity for both homeownership or business ownership and the American dream, and even the ability to rise up, you know, to ensure that we have economic and upward mobility in our community. But we are also burdened by some systemic challenges, and those include environmental challenges, educational attainment, you know, some perceptions about us, some economic, socioeconomic indicators, and even, you know, some more, less quantitative, more qualitative, you know, a disconnect between neighborhoods. You know, we talk about the east and west of 99 Divide, but really, I mean, outside of a few pockets, we have very little civic engagement or civic livelihood that is neighborhood-based. And so we need more of that. And especially in this conversation that's going on throughout the nation, that's going on in our community about social inclusion, social equity, we need to readily address inclusion and equity, and the issue that those are part and parcel of the economy. So we're also seeing, I think, really great collaboration. And I know unprecedented is an adjective that is overused in these days. But when you look at what's happening in terms of just the regional branding effort, even the city's proposals around economic development, the homelessness collaborative, the work between the city, the county, and the nonprofit community around that, the work that's going on with my partner from Kern Community Foundation and the K-16 environment around the Kern Education Pledge, you know, we have a lot going on, even the COVID response that has been multi-governmental and multi-agency. We have an unprecedented level of action and collaboration, something that I think has been, you know, not seen before. And it's time to take that and to leverage that and see if we can get other results and have that bleed into other areas. So, you know, when we did the branding, when we did the regional brands, and we talked about what were the strategies and what and what type of message did we want to say about Bakersfield and Kern County, you know, we did pick something that was, in a sense, an ode to the past. So the sound of something better, you know, trying to find me something better on the streets of Bakersfield. But also is aspirational. It is not something that stands still. It's not about just where we are today or who we were. It's who we aspire today. And so that's about changing the way we're seen. As part of that research, one of the things that was very clear was that we had, as citizens, that our neighbors had a worst impression of this community than outside audiences. And that's something that we need to change and probably is part and parcel of some of those systemic issues that I talked about before. So we need to change how we're seen internally. We need to change how we're seen externally. We need to engage more. We need to participate at the state and federal legislative and advocacy levels. And that's another area that, in terms of the budget, I'm extremely pleased about to see resources being put towards being more of a participant in that arena. And that's something at the chamber that we're committed to supporting too. It's about enhancing available resources. It's drawing in investment, whether that's private or philanthropic. You know, one of the reasons why we supported Measure N is that we thought the city needed more resources in order to improve the quality of life and the prospects of the citizens who live in Bakersfield. And then we need to really think about inclusion and equity in different terms, not as just societal issues. But we need an economy that works for everybody. We need an economy that really isn't just like a rising tide lifts all boats. That's a great phrase. But that people are participating in and there is equity in terms of their participation. That is really going to help us get to the bottom of some of those pockmarks that we talked about at the beginning. So what is B3K? So it is a collaboration amongst business, government, and civic stakeholders about a shared economic growth and opportunity strategy and ultimately, investment plan for Bakersfield and Kern County. This is based on a lot of work that we've seen happen in other parts of the country, other parts of the state. We have seen great models around this type of economic development in places like Louisville, in Pittsburgh. Mr. Dale mentioned Ontario, Councilmember Weir. And Ontario is a big player in the Inland Empires Inclusive Economic Development Program, the IE GO strategy. And what we've seen out of these are the ability to draw in resources, draw in investment, and really, again, change external perceptions to be that sparkling image of a community that is engaging, that is vibrant, that is a hub for innovation and activity and that can draw in investment and leverage the investments that you all are making and our private sector employers, which I represent, are making. And so what's the outcome? You know, what we're trying to do is not to be an overlay over things. We are not trying to be the master of all things. What we're trying to do is to figure out what is going on and to connect, really back to that first slide of Christians and Mr. Clegg's, connecting these disparate activities so that we can all advance a kind of common agenda around regional prosperity with a focus on job quality and participation in quality jobs. So, you know, we tend to think of things in political boundaries, you know, the city, the county, the state. And our region's economy doesn't respect political boundaries. You know, there is very little oil production or agricultural production in the city limits. But the health of those two industries are directly related to how many people are employed or unemployed in the city of Bakersfield, to the level of sales tax receipts that you receive from economic activity and other things. You know, the city's fate is linked to not just the county's broader economy, but really even the state's broader economy. And so we need to find ways to link and complement existing and in-progress economic development efforts. So right now, what we have is the city's economic development strategy, which we fully support. The county, serendipitously, is going through a process of updating their comprehensive economic development strategy or said strategy right now. And then the state, we have had a significant amount of engagement from the Newson administration around their desire for more regions-up planning, especially around economic development. And so where we are and what we see B3K is as the linkage between those three types of activities happening today. So, you know, how is this process unique from what, you know, Mr. Dale talked about? And what are we trying to get in terms of an outcome? So what we're really trying to do is, again, use those learnings from other areas that have been successful in producing these comprehensive planning processes. If you think about the economic development strategy that will be developed for the city, and this in terms of an analogy, the analogy of like a body, the EDSP that Nadelson Dale will create is like the skeleton. It is absolutely, you know, foundational, necessary. B3K is like the connective tissue, the soft stuff, that brings all of those things together. It's looking at not just what type of industries do we need to grow, but how do we grow those industries? What investments do, not the city necessarily, needs to make, but other actors maybe in the educational sphere need to make to improve outcomes and ensure that we have a workforce that attracts that industry or attracts that corporation. And really, I think, you know, what we've heard through your goal-setting and council priorities is a focus on outcomes and a focus on measurement. And I think that that's something that both the EDSP that Nadelson Dale is proposing and this, we are linked in that. We are 100% in agreement that whatever we do needs to have clear performance metrics and outcomes that we're driving towards so that we know how we're doing. We can measure it, a real focus on data. So this effort is going to be externally advised but locally-led. We are tapping the resources and reputations of the national think tank, the Brookings Institution, which has been involved in a lot of just the kind of thought process around these types of strategies, but also advising regions on how they create more inclusive, more enduring economic development strategies. And then it's also leveraging proven stakeholder engagement capabilities of local organizations. If you look at, you know, the work that the chamber has done around our branding program, if you look at what we've done around the campaign for Measure N or our engagement with the state, if you look at the Community Foundation and what they're doing around nonprofit engagement, capacity building, or the Kern Pledge, we have a proven track record of developing these engagement activities that bring in really valuable outcomes and products. So how will B3K and EDSP interact? And I think, you know, just to mimic what Mr. Dale said, you know, these will be complementary and cohesive. You know, this will not be two silos existing over in space, not talking to each other. We will use shared data sets. So again, when we define those outcomes, we're defining them from the same, we're singing from the same songbooks. We're talking about the same data. We are charting the same performance. We will have these joint stakeholder engagement strategies. And again, that's also going to dovetail into the county's Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy update. So again, as we go forward, we will not have three efforts going out to largely the same stakeholders to ask very similar questions about how they feel about the economy and what they want to see in terms of job quality, job development, and growing industries. So we will, you know, create kind of an economy of scale, but also really a lot of alignment around what those inputs are. And then finally, we'll have alignment on strategies. So those strategies will, that the Nadelson Dale Group is developing as part of the economic development plan for the city will feed into ultimately the strategic plans of B3K and in a sense, inform even the county's Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. So what you have is really overlapping efforts, very much like the slide that Mr. Clegg showed at the beginning, that are feeding on each other and leveraging the work to get better results for all stakeholders. Here is a very tough slide to read about our timeline. We are in the organizing phase and we expect to be wrapped up around April of next year. Again, we have synced our timelines, especially on the stakeholder engagement with the Nadelson Dale Group's timeline. We have a great, what we're calling our core team of city staff, county staff, EDC, CSUB, chamber, and the Community Foundation that have kind of mapped out this process along with our advisory team from the Brookings Institution. And we are in the process of developing this executive committee, which includes a number of stakeholders who are really important, not only to the economy, but to our unique communities. It includes education, it includes labor, it includes social justice actors, amongst others. This is really a unique way to approach this. This is not just thinking about things in terms of this industry needs these resources to produce these jobs. It's more about collectively, how do we problem-solve? Collectively, how do we address some of these issues that are impediments to economic development? And then how do we jointly chart a course that everyone can really agree on in terms of what is our economic future and what do we want in terms of the city of Bakersfield? So I will say thank you, and I will answer any questions. I think just a couple of things that I would like to put on the table in terms of, you know, what this is and what this isn't. You know, we have obviously requested resources. This is not a request for ongoing resources. This is a request for one-time resources. Secondly, this is in no way trying to micromanage or take away any of the decision-making power that any political body or any legislative bodies can have over their economic development strategy. That is really, I think, the impetus and the importance of having us aligned with the EDSP because we are really going to be able to take the inputs that your council really approves as what your goals are and to develop a little bit more of that connective soft tissue around them and how we get there. So again, appreciate the opportunity to present and appreciate the focus on economic and community development by the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Mr. Clegg, would you like to make any statements? We'll go then to the public and then we'll come back to council for questions and comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll withhold any statements and see what questions come after a public comment.
Right, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any written comments or calls that you need to notify us? And then we'll go to Mr. Hightower.
No additional comments have been received. We do have just the one public speaker from Troy Hightower.
Welcome, Mr. Hightower.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Troy Hightower. I'm a local consultant. Before I get started, I just wanted to welcome our new city manager. Just for your benefit, I've been working with city staff and council members in support of economic and community development. I do support the marketing strategy and analysis that's proposed, as well as developing an economic development department. However, I do have some recommendations that I asked the council to consider to be included in this marketing analysis and development strategy. The first is to provide a definition of economic development. What is that? That's, it means different things to different people. So I think if we could come up with a definition that we can all agree on, that would help us to understand what we're talking about. We'd like to look at the challenges and opportunities for economic development in the disadvantaged communities, as well as the city's designated economic opportunity areas, like the Southeast Economic Opportunity Area. I think it was mentioned in the consultant's presentation to identify measures and indicators to determine how successful we are with these efforts. I think that the study of affordable housing needs should not be limited to homeless. Also recommend incentives or subsidies to internet providers to expand internet access to communities that do not have internet access. Transit-oriented development, or TOD, I think that should also be included. And I would suggest working with KernCog on that. Public-private partnerships, especially for affordable housing and mixed-use projects. Also suggests reviewing the results and the recommendation that come from the TCC project that's going on. And then finally, this is related to the comments that was made by the earlier gentleman about staffing, the gentleman from the Oversight Committee, Measure N. This study is supposed to develop an economic strategy with recommendations and action plans. I think it would be better to have those recommendations and action plan in place before we start hiring people to do those jobs. I think that would be more prudent to have the knowledge and experience that the new hires are consistent with the new strategies. And finally, what I'd like to say is, I'm, this is an ongoing effort I support. And I'm willing to work with councilmembers and staff to further development of economic development in all our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hightower. For those who are viewing online, if you'd like to submit a comment, you're welcome to submit those to the city clerk for the city council. And so we'll first have Councilmember Weir, followed by Councilmember Freeman, then Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Weir?
Well, thank you. I think I started talking about this about a year ago. And it hasn't gotten much legs yet. So I'm happy to see that maybe we're going to actually move forward with a plan. I would ask that the city manager forward that link for Ontario to all the councilmembers. I think that would be good for everybody to see. And it's a good link and it's a very positive. It's very, very positive, though I think they'll enjoy seeing it. So I mean, I don't disagree with anything that anybody's said tonight. I'm trying to make it clear in my head how this is going to happen because when I first started talking about this, it was a visioning plan. It's about where we're going to be in five years, where we're going to be in 10 years. So now we are going through an economic development analysis, my understanding. Is that basically what we're going through?
Councilmember and Mayor, we will do an analysis, but also it will create the plan of, you know, how to take the steps to get where we want to get five years from now.
Okay, that's what I have questions about. So if this plan takes us someplace that we don't want to go or we don't want to be there in five years, shouldn't we know that before we start this? So in planning, in my feeble little world, you always want to know where you're at, exactly where you're at. In concrete terms, you want to know where you're at. But you really don't start a process until you know where you want to be. And if you don't know where you're going to be, where you want to be, then you're never going to know if you get there. So that's the part that confuses me on this. I want to know if we go through all this, at what point do we say, this is what we want Bakersfield to be and look like and feel like in five years or seven years, 10 years, whatever that timeframe is? At what point do we decide that? And then it's getting from where we are now to where we want to be is basically the process. So if we have strengths here that aren't going to last, but we need to replace them with something else, okay, where are we going to go with that? What is it going to look like when we're done with this process? And so if somebody here could explain how this process is going to do that, I would be happy as a little clam.
Councilmember and Mayor and council, I'll invite Roger to help speak to that. But I would say in advance, one concrete example of how this will happen and also how it interacts with the B3K is that initially, the proposal from Nadelson Dale Group proposed three stakeholder engagements. And the initial stakeholder engagement would help us do some of that, you know, SWOT analysis-type information. And then a subsequent opportunity would be to help us think about, kind of like, you know, what you were saying, who do we want to be? Where do we want to go? We recognize that the B3K was going to be asking some of those very same questions, but they were going to have about eight different stakeholder engagements. So we said, let's make sure that our three are part of their eight, so we do those only one time. But then each of these is sequenced over time so that we can have check-in points with the city council after each of these engagements and then move on to the next phase. But having said that much, let me have Roger say more because he's the pro and not me.
Okay, but we were talking about charting a course. I think those were Nick's words. Okay, if we're going to chart a course, we got to know where we're going.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to clarify that. The program that we're proposing, I believe, encompass- The program that we're proposing, I believe, encompasses all the things that you've just suggested. It is about a vision, but it's a vision that we will help the stakeholders and the community to develop through a process that takes advantage of information we will provide about what you've discussed, where we are now. So we're gonna look at what the vision is, but we're gonna inform the stakeholders as we go along with basic data about what is happening in the Bakersfield and the Kern County economies, how that compares to statewide and national benchmarks, how it compares to other competitor or model communities for Bakersfield and Kern County. And so the vision is something that won't necessarily be fully formed on day one. We will start to talk about it at the beginning of the process, but we anticipate a series of interactions with the stakeholders so that when we start with a vision, it's preliminary, we provide additional information about what we believe is feasible based on market trends and, as you mentioned, some things may be declining, that you've got some things that you've traditionally based your economy on that may be changing. The opportunity is to look at what are the potential growth areas that can replace or even enhance those. And so the vision would ultimately incorporate that based on the research that we would do through the process. And when we get to the end of the process, we're also looking at what you've described about how do we get there. So we start with just basic data information collecting, kind of a SWOT analysis. What's the situation we're in now? What's good, what's challenging, what are likely trends going to be? We then move to a market analysis that projects forward five or 10 years that says, these are what we think are the most feasible and desirable targets for Bakersfield based on what your strengths are, also what some of your challenges are, and...
And who would decide that? I mean, who are you, are you gonna present that to groups or...
Yes. So we will present it to stakeholders. We will, to the extent appropriate, inform it with what we understand to be best practices based on our professional experience in doing this. So we know that we've got stakeholders that are very familiar with the local economy, have different areas of expertise about business and other factors that influence economic development. We try to help bring that together with our perspective, having done this for other communities throughout the country and specifically in California, what are the best practices for these types of programs and offer up some models that we can discuss. And Ontario would be just one example. I'm glad that we agree that that's a great example, but we would look at others as well because ultimately, when we look at models, there may not be a single one that exactly fits what you want to be because Bakersfield is its own place with its own unique opportunities. But there might be parts of one program and parts of another that would be good components of a plan in Bakersfield, and there may be other things that aren't anywhere else being done, but we think are opportunities here that you would include in that plan. So we would anticipate that the same group of stakeholders would be together for at least three workshop-type meetings spaced over about a four or five-month period. We start with that kind of initial visioning process, just getting understanding of what the strengths and weaknesses are from the community's perspectives. Then we come back and we inform that process with the research that we will have done on the market, the target industries. And preliminarily, we can make recommendations about what those opportunities may be, but there's also a stakeholder process of providing guidance on, well, we think these are the best fit for our community and we'll, you know, work with them to make sure that we're not selecting things that we think are not feasible, but within the range of things that are feasible, we do look for stakeholder input on where there might be good connections. And then the final part of the process, and again, this would in part happen at a stakeholder meeting, but backed up by work that we're doing in between meetings, is how do we get there? So we know where we are, we have a vision where we want to get, and we've validated that with our research to determine what we believe is feasible.
Okay, now we've got a vision, and how is that vision gonna be portrayed? Because I know I've given the city manager what I think is an excellent sample of what a vision is. It was a small PowerPoint slide. You can go through it in like 15 or 20 minutes, and it just lays out exactly where that city is gonna be, and it's very, it's graphic, it's artistic, it's excellent. So are we gonna, is that something in our plan too?
Yes, you know, the vision would have both narrative statements, kind of the PowerPoint bullet points that get it across very succinctly and very powerfully to the whole community. But it's also followed up with a specific action plan, and that would have, the vision is further articulated in terms of actual quantitative goals. We want to attract this much investment or create this many jobs in particular industries.
Of course, I understand all that. I'm just trying to make sure that this is the plan that me personally, as one council member, has really thought about for a long time, and I'd like to see the city invest in it, so.
Well, I absolutely, first of all, we anticipate, as I mentioned, a lot of interaction with the council, whether it's in a workshop setting or one-on-one meetings or interviews. So we welcome your input at the very outset of the process so that all the thinking you've already done about this gets, helps to shape the way we approach this, and we can interact on how that corresponds with our experience and the way we typically do it. But this will have, this plan will have Bakersfield's unique fingerprints on it. This is not gonna be a template that we take from someplace else, but we will work with you and the stakeholders and the staff throughout this process because in our experience, what makes a plan most effective in actually changing things and getting things implemented is the buy-in that we build through that process. If we come back to the council six or nine months from now and present a plan that you've not had much input on or the community hasn't much input on, it can pretty easily just kind of fly out the window because people haven't bought into it, they don't see their own input and their own preferences to how the community is gonna move forward in there. But when they do see that, there's a much greater opportunity and probability of that getting legs, if you will, and moving forward.
And I understand that, but it's also very helpful to a lot of people if it's communicated in a short, easy-to-understand manner, for the general public to even just look and they say, oh yeah, well, I know what we're going now. And I agree, I know there's action plans and things that have to be done and all that stands behind it, but I just want to make sure that we have a good starting point and we know where that vision is, exactly where that vision is and exactly where we're going so we chart a course appropriately.
I agree.
And if I may, councilmember, just a couple other thoughts related to the line of questioning. I think to be clear about when we say stakeholder, that's a pretty amorphous term, and so I wanted to clarify what that means. You know, I think it's valuable that, of course, the city council is, you know, for this particular deliverable of Nadelson Dale, the city council is the chief stakeholder. In the process, it's important to have some of our other community leaders and, you know, business folks and other, you know, individuals part of the feedback of that stakeholder group. And so these sessions that we would hold jointly with B-3K would have representative diversity of folks from the community as stakeholders giving that input. And it's not necessarily envisioned that every one of those meetings would have the full council at them, but the council will have, you know, individual interviews, will have representation in these stakeholder meetings. But one of the things I'm hearing tonight, and I'm saying it for myself as well as Roger and our staff, I hear clearly an opportunity to plan a very specific check-in with the city council at the right moment in the process when we have what we feel like is a good vision that you've expressed, that we can come back and check in with council before we get too far down the path on action planning. So I heard that in some of the comments tonight, and we can arrange to make sure we do that check-in with this distinct body as opposed to some of the different stakeholder, you know, outreach efforts. And then the other thing I would say is that, you know, we have and will continue to share the good examples that council has shared and their thoughts about what this should look like, including the sample that you shared with me. And as we've discussed it, the outcome that we anticipate will have some very good visuals, some high-level data and suggestions. I think the one area that will be a little bit challenged is in identifying some of the land mass areas that would be targeted for industry clusters. We'll need to do some work now with this plan, but then follow that up with a general plan because that's the one element that will be a little bit different from some of the other plans you might see, that it may not have that, you know, picture of that, you know, land use development pattern identified through this specific project, but everything else that's been shared with us is envisioned, you know, happening in this plan.
Okay, and so when we talk about community meetings with stakeholders and civic leaders and all, are we talking about going to, I mean, there's various neighborhoods and areas within the city. Are we going out?
I'm gonna let Mr. Ortiz answer that question as those that are kind of thinking about where and how we do the actual engagement.
So I think what we're focused on is doing kind of a multifaceted approach, which would include, just like I think the Nadelson Dale Group is going to do, some one-on-one interviews, some surveying, both qualitatively and quantitatively, and trying to focus on some key geographic areas, and then some stakeholder meetings, like you could probably envision in your mind that are community-based. So we are looking at a range of ways, especially as we enter into this work and community gatherings and bringing hundreds of people together potentially are not necessarily, it's not clear as to when that's going to happen, but how do we supplement that with some other proven ways of doing stakeholder engagement in the near term? But to Christian's point and to Roger's point, I mean, you all are the main stakeholder. If a plan is produced that doesn't have buy-in from the council, then that is unacceptable. And so we will make sure, again, as we sync these projects, that there are specific checkpoints where we are not only getting your views on the front end, but we are checking in with you about the status of where things are so that it's very, very clear about your goals for the city. And then I would just say, I totally agree on where are we now and what that means to us and to B-3K is really taking a look at the existing economic development, workforce development, community development strategies and really doing a deep dive on them and getting a sense of if they are working and how they are leveraged against each other. So for instance, the county has a cluster-based economic development strategy. Are the workforce development strategies of the Workforce Investment Board or our community colleges or CSUs or high schools synced with those clusters in terms of creating those workforces? So it's a multi-layer work about where we are before we even start the process of charting the course towards where we're going. But fundamentally agree that you all are our most important stakeholder.
Oh, well, thank you. One other question before I leave. I know I'm gonna get a question of why now? And my answer, my answer is, well, if not now, then when? I mean, really, this is a process that is desperately needed in the city of Bakersfield. And so, Mr. Clegg or whoever, tell me why it's important that we start this right now.
Yeah, thanks, councilmember and mayor and council. As communicated, this is a process that's gonna take some time, it's gonna take several months to develop this. And some individuals have asked me, you know, right now it's COVID, it's so uncertain, you know, is this really a good time to do this? One, it doesn't mean that we're gonna go out tomorrow and start, you know, deploying our economic investments. We need to go out and do the legwork, and by the time this is completed is when it's estimated that the economy's gonna really start, you know, picking up. A second point I would make, though, is that, you know, there are, almost every city up and down the state and throughout the nation has an economic development strategy. You know, it's overdue here in Bakersfield. The good news for us is that everyone else's strategy is irrelevant at this point because the circumstances have changed so significantly with COVID, they're gonna have to go back and sort of rewrite. We're at an interesting and unique moment in time that we've been in the planning process and we're poised to begin so that we come out of COVID with a plan ready to go, that we can leverage our strategic advantages. And I think not only do we have strategic advantages naturally coming out of COVID, this just allows us to sort of heighten those and find maybe some new ones to really leverage coming out of COVID and have our economic recovery come even quicker than some other areas. So I think it is an uncertain time, but it's a good time to plan. And you're right, if we don't do it now, I'm not sure when things are gonna be particularly more certain. This gives us a chance to, you know, really come out of the gates at a sprint.
Okay, thank you. With that, I would like to move staff's recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. We also have a number of other comments. Thank you. Councilmember Freeman, next.
Fine, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I have a few comments. One, I think I've been assured we will come out of this with a 12-month, 24-month, 36-month action plan or something similar to that. It's pretty concrete about, these are the actions that need to take place and these are the goals we have. I thought I heard that, is that correct?
Yes, councilmember Freeman and mayor and council, that is correct.
Okay. Next is, when we talk about stakeholders and trying to get something done, in the end, at least from my perspective, we're trying to grow the economy. We have to have employers, which means we have to have companies, entrepreneurs, who are here already, expand their businesses, invent new businesses, but the people who are here with resources, personnel and lots of ideas, and then people from outside. But I would like this to include a lot of outreach to local businesses, big and small, so that we know, what do you need? What do we need to do to get you to expand your firm? And they may be a thousand different things. Some of it might be very easy, you know, build that arterial another mile and I can put my plant in, some simple things. But I have a feeling we're gonna hear a lot of frustration from them that it's not you, Bakersfield, it's the state of California that is making it really hard for us to expand our businesses here. And so I'm hoping that if you meet with these people a lot, we get a lot of smart people and consultants here, we can come up with some ideas for talking with the state to get them to change, modify some of the restrictions, edicts, policies they put on us, that with a little tweaking here and there, will allow our people to do business. If we can hear from them, you know, if the state would just do this, we don't have to wipe out our oil industry. I mean, right now, we have pretty hostile forces coming at us, preventing us from creating jobs. In fact, they're killing jobs, the same as in the agricultural industry, specifically the water. If there's some, if there's some modifications and some fine tuning that our people, our businesses say, if you can help us do this, then maybe we can get together with state representatives in Sacramento to change, not eliminate their policies, but to change them enough that we can start doing business again. So I hope that somehow that can get woven in. Second point, I would like this to include some very thoughtful, realistic recommendations of, this is how much it's going to cost from a, you know, we have to include it in either our general fund or our measure in, but ongoing from your city, you're gonna have to start devoting this much to economic development. And I don't mean capital projects, I mean ongoing for personnel, for marketing, for outreach, for other, maybe, you know, for incentives for businesses. Is it 10 million a year, is it 15 million? What are we gonna have to realistically include, and maybe by looking at what some other successful cities have included, to make this happen? Because right now, we spend nothing, basically nothing, and that doesn't make it happen. So I want some objective advice on, if you're gonna do this, this is what it's gonna take so we can put it in our future budgets.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. I see Mr. Clegg nodding his head. And Mr. Clegg, would you like to offer some comments?
Really quickly, yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council and Councilmember Freeman. Thank you for those comments. It reminded me of two important points. One, in the proposed budget, I included $500,000 for economic development incentive tools. And you've asked me a few times, what does that mean? Because we didn't line item those out. And I've given you some samples of, or examples of, you know, what some of those tools typically are. But this, this strategy, we've asked very specifically, tell us what those incentives should be in Bakersfield. Now, we'll, we have our economic opportunity areas and we're going to continue to make some movement during this planning process. But this, that one of the outcomes will be that they'll be able to tell us, here are the incentives that you should have in your toolkit for this particular strategy so that we can then start line iteming out those dollars. And that $500,000 may be just a placeholder. Maybe we say, you know, we could, we could build each of the tools we need with a little bit more, or maybe that's enough. So that is one of the elements of what we'll see coming out of this plan. And then on the state advocacy piece.
Can you, I just want to address that.
Go ahead, Councilmember Freeman.
I want to get a word in here. I think, I suspect it's a lot more than 500,000. And I want someone from outside to say, you know, Ontario or New Mexi, you know, Santa Fe, whoever has successfully built their city up, this is what they had to devote to it. It might be five or 10 million a year, might not be 500,000. I just want realistic numbers given to us, you know, just so we know what we spent, you know, I used to give the example for one little project in Bakersfield, to just outreach, we'd spend 450,000 a year just on advertising for a seniors project so we could get people from LA and the coast. So, you know, it can cost, those are good investments, but it can cost a lot of money when you start marketing your city and trying to bring people in and have outreach and go out and meet with people. So I just want, I just want realistic advice on, on this. So I think you're onto it, I'm just saying, I think the magnitude might be bigger than some people think.
Fair enough, and I appreciate you suggesting that it might be bigger and then we'll see, you know, how that balances out with some of the other priorities of the council through the budget process each year. But I do think that getting that objective recommendation through this process is a great outcome, so thank you.
Okay, I'm done with my, my comments are done.
Okay. And I just wanted to comment really quickly on the state advocacy piece. I think there are opportunities with a distinct city plan to do some of that. But that's one of the areas where the B-3K strength comes in is because B-3K is designed to do much of that advocacy work with a larger group of partners that can put their political weight behind some of those same requests to the state. And so I think that is another great recommendation that will come out of this process.
Maybe accelerate our advocacy because we have something to say.
Agreed.
Something to ask for.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman, Mr. Clegg. Councilmember Smith, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just first, I'd like to say I appreciate Councilman Weir's foresight in getting this started, like we said about a year ago. And, you know, vision for the city at this point, I think, is very important. We are a mid-sized city, we have been geographically isolated for a long time, we are a unique metro area, and we are unique. We've had industries, ag and oil, for a long time, and we're at a point where we believe that some point in the future, those are, those are changing drastically. So I think it's exciting for the city, I appreciate Councilman Weir's foresight. We, because mostly measuring, we now have the resources to look to the future instead of just trying to solve last year's problems. I think it's very important, the extensive civic engagement, as we've heard recently, you know, some neighborhoods, some communities feel like they have not been heard. And I think we want to hear everybody and work towards total community investment. I think we do have a lot to offer, portability, as was mentioned, a very high quality of life, again, you know, that comes with a mid-sized city. The key is quality jobs, that solves a lot of the priorities. And if we can move forward with addressing how to attract those quality jobs, we have other amenities already. So I'm excited to look forward and look forward to, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. And just in line with as we go into the neighborhoods, let's make sure that for non-English speakers that we have both the verbal and the written material available. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. Thank you so much to all the presenters. I want to echo Councilmember Smith's comments and thank my colleague to the left of me, not politically, but positioned on the dais.
Clearly.
Yeah, I know. I want to thank him for, for his leadership in bringing this to the table. I want to echo a point that Councilmember Freeman made in terms of the time-bound nature of this work. I'm not interested in a plan that just sits on a shelf. I don't think any of us are. So it's really important for us to get the timelines right and say, is this a 36-month plan, a five-year plan? 36 months sounds really good, just because we want to get, we're serious about this, so we want to get to work. And so I just really want to make sure we really identify those timelines. Then also, I heard a lot about Ontario and I appreciate that. I'm wondering, though, if, Mr. Dale, if you can describe to us some of the outcomes that cities have realized as a result of engaging in this process? It's important for us to be able to communicate to the broader public what they're going to get out of this. What is, what is the vision in this vision process?
Sure. Appreciate the question, thank you. I've given a couple of examples from places we've worked. One is Yuma, Arizona, and it's interesting because we have worked for that county or that organizations in that county for about the past 18 to 20 years. We were initially brought in to do a plan similar to what we're talking about this evening. And it was, at the time, that Yuma had the highest unemployment rate in the US, I think it was around, hovered around 30% certain times of the year. And of course, being in an agriculture area yourselves, you understand that sometimes that's a seasonal effect, but still 30% was very high, however you cut it. And they had persistent problems of not being able to attract investment in related or other industries besides their core activity of agriculture. And there were also issues there about just basic community functionality, if you will. The housing stock wasn't very diverse, there weren't good shopping opportunities, hotels, places for people to stay. And what was unique about that process is that we brought together a coalition or a consortium that involved, was led by the, actually the Workforce Development Organization, the Private Industry Council, but it also involved the Greater Yuma Chamber of Commerce, the Yuma Economic Development Corporation, the City of Yuma, the County of Yuma, and the local community college district. So there were six partners. And they came together to host what we called the Workforce and Economic Development Summit. And it was a process similar to what I've described where we had stakeholders engaged for a series of four meetings over the period of a year. And they were about 60 to 70 people that attended all of the meetings. And the same group of people came to all the meetings. It wasn't just you come to one and you're done. It was a process where we wanted them to be engaged, partly because we didn't want to just end up with a technical document that kind of laid out a market study, we wanted buy-in. So we wanted a community of partners that would help to implement and support this strategy moving forward. What's been interesting about that is that Yuma has dramatically improved, and they still have challenges, still have a higher unemployment rate than they would like, but they dramatically improved. They've dramatically, they have taken opportunities to diversify their economy in areas related to defense, renewable energy and manufacturing. And they have gotten great investment in new hotels. When we first went there, there was virtually no place to stay. And now there are a number of name-brand hotels that have come up in the last 15 years, a regional shopping center that was unlike anything they'd ever had. But I would say the most exciting thing is that they have aligned their workforce development programs with the anticipated needs of their industries that are growing to create a, an environment that is responsive to industry growth, retaining and expanding the industries that are there and also attracting new ones. And what has happened is that that consortium of six agencies that came together for that process are still working together today on a, essentially on a quarterly basis. They meet to become a, basically a team, a red team, if you will, that whenever a problem comes up in the local economy, they've got all the players there who can respond to it and respond to the needs of the business and development community to get things done and get projects moving forward and to create an environment where there's a message that we are open for business, we are here to attract investment. And that's exactly what they've done. We've worked in other communities in places throughout California where they, the, the process of doing this has attracted federal grant dollars. So by having a plan of this nature in place, they are eligible to attract major, you know, multimillion-dollar grants for infrastructure and other investments that support economic growth. And so another major benefit of doing this type of a strategy, and I think again, this aligns very well with what the B-3K program is, is that it lines you up for external resources, potentially also, as was alluded to in Councilmember Freeman's comments, aligns you to begin to influence external policies, in this case, the state of California, in ways that can enhance your prospects for growth and what would otherwise be a good market, but because of these state regulations, it's sometimes limited. So those are some examples, and I'm glad to answer additional questions if you have them.
That's great, thank you so much. I just have two more comments. One is, I was very happy to hear a lot about equity and inclusion in the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. And, you know, it relates to Mr. Hightower's comments tonight about the unique needs, challenges and opportunities within disadvantaged communities. And I think it's really important to highlight that, to really be focused on how we really, what is our strategy to really to lift people out of poverty in some of our community or all of our community? And, and also while doing that, recognizing the diversity of our, of our city and the growing diversity of our city. And my hope is that we will work hard in engaging stakeholders from diverse backgrounds and reach out to the Hispanic chamber, the Black Chamber as well, to be, to be key players in this whole initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also want to take this opportunity to mention that I took very careful notes with Mr. Hightower's comments. And really, everything on his list are things that we are already anticipating will be part of this process. So we look forward to his input as, as we go forward as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Thank you, Mr. Clegg. You have a motion, please cast your votes. No, actually, we are going to do it by roll call. Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Parlier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Weir?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Councilmember Smith, do you want to unmute?
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
And Councilmember Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you very much. Let's take a 10-minute break, then we'll come back. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent calendar items 8A through 8AM for approval. A staff memorandum was received regarding item 8C, transmitting correspondence received in support and opposition of staff's recommendation. An additional staff memorandum was received requesting item 8C be removed from the agenda. And another staff memorandum was regarding, received regarding item 8F, correcting the ward listed on the administrative report to state Ward 6.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Does any council member wish to recuse themselves from a particular item? Does any council member wish to remove an item for separate consideration? Anybody on the phone? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent calendar items 8A through 8AM with a noted corrections by the city clerk.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Parlier?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Weir?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
And Councilmember Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to note, I was excited to see our first EOA incentive program grant go to Bitwise in downtown Bakersfield. I'm really excited about the EOA programs and I'd like to ask staff if we can schedule some sort of Zoom workshop or online workshop for prospective grantees in the future so that we can continue to promote the EOA program. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Our next item is the public hearing items. Before I open public hearings, I'll go over the presentation time policy. Each side is allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers, so it's important that you identify yourself, make your statement quickly so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to the staff's recommendation, then we'll hear from those who'd like to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's the clock on the TV screens behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the mic, identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will go on, and at the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating that your time is up. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be answered until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk, she'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Unless there's approval by the majority of the city council, there's a strict 15-minute time limit for all those in favor or opposed to staff's recommendation. Madam Clerk, please read the first and only public hearing item. Oh, so we have two. The first public hearing item.
Public hearing for the fiscal, apologize, public hearing to consider resolutions adopting refuse and recycling rates for fiscal year 2020, 2021. We received a staff memorandum regarding, or transmitting correspondence regarding this item protesting an increase in refuse and recycling rates for 19 parcels.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak in opposition. Oh, I, actually, we probably should go to comments first. Do you have any kind of presentation?
Honorable Mayor, city council members, as you're aware, the city of Bakersfield provides refuse collection, disposal and material processing services for all the residents and businesses in the city. This staff is proposing an increase to refuse and recycling rates due to increased cost of providing such services. The city has experienced an increased cost, operations, equipment and maintenance, along with administrative costs of collecting the, or performing this such service. In addition, the city has a long-term contract with a haulers that grants an annual increase to their rates based on the CPI, the Consumer Price Index. The Consumer Price Index has increased to 3.1% this fiscal year, or this proposed year, and the staff is proposing a 4% increase in rates due to several reasons and primarily being the, in addition, the cost for paying gate fees for local recycling centers because of the global decline in the markets recycling materials. So staff is recommending approval of resolution adopting increases to the refuse and recycling rates and staff is, in addition, staff has recommends approval of resolution authorizing the county's auto collector's office to collect residential refuse and recycling charges as a separate line item on the annual property bill.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler. At this time, I'll open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone who wishes to speak in opposition. Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Vice Mayor?
Thanks, Mayor. Nick, the other day during your presentation, you had a slide. Nick, the other day during your presentation, you had a slide up, and it talked about our comparison of rates compared to other jurisdictions. I know that city staff, our contractors, try to do a really good job at holding those rates down. Nobody likes the rates going up. I don't either, and it's terrible time, you know, with COVID and potential layoffs, but can you just touch real quick, again, where we're at with other comparison cities?
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor Parlier, thank you for bringing that to attention. The city of Bakersfield did a rate survey of 37 other city agencies that are comparable size and nature to the city of Bakersfield. The city is the lowest of those 37 cities that we have provided, surveyed, and just to give you a reference, the city of Bakersfield, their current year is $214, current rate is $214 a year as compared to the county, which is nearly $270, which is, which could be people right across the street in some cases in our city's jurisdiction. So we are providing probably a service at a very economical rate compared to all the other cities, and we also provide a lot of additional services that other cities and counties do not provide. So, yes.
And can you expand just a little bit on your comments regarding recyclables and talk about how China, how those recyclables used to go to China, and now that, that doesn't happen, and stuff we used to make money on that we have to pay for to get rid of now?
Thank you, yes. As you're indicating, the China used to accept 60% of the world's recyclable materials.
And they paid for it, correct?
They paid for it. They would, we would actually get in the range of $60 to $65 a ton for recyclables recovered through our collection system. Now we are paying close to $140 to $148 per ton to dispose of those, or to still try to recycle those materials. They just lost their value in the market, and the market has gotten a lot more strict, so the efforts to clean and sort the materials are a lot more stringent, so it costs a lot, costs more to process those recyclables in order to get a recyclable fee back.
And I brought this up once before, consul, that, okay, how come we just don't take it, put it out to the dump with the rest of the brown trash, but Sacramento has mandates forcing us to do certain things, correct?
That's correct. The state mandates that we recover a certain amount of materials and divert it from landfills. We have regulations that require us to divert these type of materials so they do not end up in landfills. You're correct, it is cheaper for us to take the materials. It costs about $45 a ton to just take it to the landfill, and right now, we're paying somewhere in the $130 to $135 a ton currently. It has reached up to $145 a ton, to $148 a ton within the past couple months. So we are exploring methods to reduce those costs. The city is actually going to be trying to do a pilot program in the very near future where we will work with a facility, another facility in town to sort and manage those processes in-house to create that competitive atmosphere that we have with the haulers as well.
Well, anything we can do to reduce those costs, it would definitely help all of our constituents, I'm sure, but it's a bitter pill, but motion accepts staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a request to speak from Councilmember Smith first. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, we always see the numbers on residential prices. Are we also the lowest on commercial rates? How do we compare on that?
Councilmember Smith, I do not have the exact values for the commercial rates. However, I, I can have staff get that information for you to come, to share a comparison of what those costs are for commercial in our city versus a commercial in other, the other 37 agencies.
I would appreciate that. I mean, we always want to be business-friendly and, you know, fair across the board, so I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Are there any other requests to speak? Seeing none, we have a motion. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Parlier?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Weir?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next public hearing item, please.
Public hearing for the fiscal year 2021 operating and capital improvement program budgets. We received a staff memorandum regarding this item, transmitting revised, proposed operating and capital budgets, and an additional staff memorandum was received, transmitting correspondence received regarding this item. Due to the numerous comments received, the comments will be available for public review in the city clerk's office.
Thank you. Mr. Hewat, Mr., Mr. Clegg, do you wish to start before Mr. Hewat? Mr. Hewat?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, city council members, Chris Hewat, City Manager's Office. Every year, I come before you for the required public hearing that takes place prior to adoption of the budget. So that is why I'm here before you this evening, simply to introduce the opportunity for the public to make comments in regards to the budget that is before the city council. There's no formal action being taken this evening to adopt the budget, and that item is scheduled for your June 24 meeting. As a matter of some history, this has been, obviously, a unique budget cycle, and we've talked about that previously. We've met several times as a council with staff on the budget, starting on May 6th, then we met on the 27th, and then most recently, June 8th, to review budget proposals for next fiscal year. The Public Safety and Vital Services Citizen Oversight Committee has met twice as well. We have transmitted the recommendations to you. Out of the $48 million, thereabouts, of new allocations that are proposed by staff, the committee either by majority or unanimously approved over a 99, or recommended over 99% of those proposals to the city council. So with that, this evening, the budget is currently proposed with an operating budget of $543.5 million and a capital improvement program budget of $88.5 million. You did hear the city clerk say that there were some updates to the numbers that were provided, and these were based upon the need to make some minor budget changes in relationship to essentially some corrections and omissions that staff identified. I will tell you that they're minor in nature. For example, the CDBG capital projects that were identified and recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee earlier in the year were omitted from entered, and being entered on the capital side, so we did enter those. And then there were some minor payroll corrections related to how we project out salary and benefits, but nothing, everything that we have presented to you by program, by department, is substantially the same. So that is, again, what we're asking you to do tonight is to accept public comment, be happy to answer any questions after you hear public comment, and then again, we'll be returning to you on the 24th for consideration and adoption of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hewat. At this time, I'll open public hearing and ask if there is anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed budget. So, it's two of you? All right. Welcome, and please introduce yourself.
My name is Eddie Lane, I'm with the Sierra Club. I had, we had made comments at the Measure N committee meeting and provided quite a lot of correspondence. We had nine pages of background. I don't, I had assumed that would be coming to the council. If it wasn't, if it was not here, I would have provided copies for tonight. I don't know if you've seen that or not. I am providing tonight my comments I'm making, as well as some pictures. I'm here regarding Measure N allocations to recreation and parks, specifically recreation and parks. Two priorities which led to Measure N being passed were enhanced amenities throughout the community, that was number 12, and enhanced neighborhoods through additional law enforcement and improved park maintenance. That was number 13. What happened? In fiscal year 2019, 20, $12.8 million, 22% of the anticipated revenues, were allocated to recreation and parks. Of that $12.8 million, $9 million, 70% were earmarked for capital expenditures for Mesa Marin, $7.5 million, and for planning purposes for Kaiser Permanente, $1.5 million. The status today, I'm passing around three pictures with regard to needed improvements in park maintenance. Martin Luther King Park, Junior Park, needs improved maintenance. That's the first picture. The uplands of Kern desperately needs improved maintenance. That's the second picture. The fire hydrant in Mesa Marin Dog Park is being well-maintained. Have there been citywide, city-sponsored, community, neighborhood, or ward meetings with regard to possible parks enhancements or improvements since the passage of Measure N? Seemingly not. Have there been parks and needs assessment work done? You would think needs assessment would be done with regard to parks. Seemingly not. But $1.5 million has been spent on planning for Kaiser Permanente. And now, this proposal before you for Measure N funding is for parks for 20, for fiscal year 2020, 21. Given an increase in projected revenues, a continuing allocation of 22% would provide $15.3 million. Instead, in this proposed capital expenditure funding for parks would be slashed from the current $2.8 to $3.47 million, a 73% reduction. Let me add that with regard to parks improvements, these are capital expenditures, and there was discussion earlier about the need to be wary about staff increases. Well, parks are a place you can put capital expenditures. You don't have to put a whole lot of money into ongoing staffing. Parks are an ideal place to put that. But now, now the plan is for a 73% reduction in funding. And $3 million of that $3.47 million is slated as match for Kaiser Permanente. This one, $2.5 million, has already been committed by the city, $1.5 million from Parks Improvement Fund and $1 million in the capital outlay funding in its January 2018 application for land and water conservation funds. That was well before the passage of Measure N. What happened to that $2.5 million? And what happened to the $500,000 in naming rights that were part of that match? That was in the proposal. What does this apparent shell game say about transparency in the Measure N budget? What does this say about the 22 parks within five miles of the Bakersfield City Hall, right here, which are receiving pennies on the dollar, while Mesa Marin and Kaiser Permanente receive $12 million in this two-year period? What does this say about the inequitable distribution of Measure N sales taxes, taxes which are regressive in nature? Bakersfield's low-income and middle-income neighborhoods are paying Measure N taxes to take their dogs over eight miles to Mesa Marin to use its dog park, or 13 miles to play soccer at Kaiser Permanente, if they can get there. There's no public transportation to either sports complex. That should have been done first. Get your transportation going before you spend millions on these complexes. Neither complex benefits existing neighborhoods, as was referenced in the ballot. The ballot talked about existing neighborhoods receiving benefits. Rather, they benefit a select group of developers building homes around them. Let's be honest, these are amenities which enrich developers, not amenities for the people who voted for Measure N. The Sierra Club has repeatedly requested Measure N funding for parks be allocated in a fair, equitable manner. We're calling for $12 million to be spent to be earmarked for parks within five miles of Bakersfield City Hall. Such an allocation would parallel the $12 million either spent or being earmarked for Mesa Marin and Kaiser Permanente. And we're calling for a halt to this giveaway of Measure N parks funding at the expense of all of the residents of Bakersfield, and I greatly appreciate this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Who else would like to speak in opposition to the proposed budget? Okay, we have Mr. Turnipseed, and then after that, sir.
Madam Mayor, counsel, Michael Turnipseed, representing the Kern County Tax Payers Association. This is a question of process. When Measure N committee votes on an issue and on a spending, the question is, does this fit one of the 13 goals of Measure N? Well, everything the city does fits in one of the goals of Measure N. When the real question should it be, what are the priorities of the city that should be addressed by Measure N? And the fact now, this year, about 54% of Measure N is going to payroll. That's why the parks got cut. I think there's $17 million of payroll in measure, the new expenditures this year. So 93 positions, I think. Measure N was intended to improve things, not backfill, and this year in particular, there was a hiring freeze on the rest of the general fund. Oh, so let's take police out of it. 47 positions are now funded by Measure N that weren't going to be funded by the traditional general fund where they are. It's become just another pot of money for when staff shows up, this is how you're going to spend it, and when they ask the question, does this meet one of the 13 goals of Measure N, the city attorney reads that out, if you're honest, you have to say yes, because everything the city does is tied into those 13 goals. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Sir?
Welcome, please introduce yourself. Hi, my name is Nicholas Emilio. Sorry, my voice is shaky, it's very cold, and I just got over a stomach bug.
Don't worry about it, that's fine.
So I'm sure you all know the conversation nationwide right now on city budgets is sort of centered around defunding police departments, and in Bakersfield, that is the forefront of the next generation here in Bakersfield that we are discussing. For the last two weeks, we have been marching day and night downtown screaming because we want justice. I'm sorry, I'm going to stick to my script here. I like what you guys are saying about funding the Black and Hispanic communities with that economic development plan, which is not what I expected it to be when I read it online. Anyway, I'm 25 years old. I earned my BA in Criminal Justice and Political Science from CSU Bakersfield. I've lived here my whole life, and up until last year, I lived in poverty my entire life. Contrary to our previous motto that Bakersfield is life as it should be, life in Bakersfield We have one of the highest teen pregnancy rates in the country. We're in a three-way national tie for worst air quality in the country. For each day that you spend breathing Bakersfield air, you shave 30 minutes off of your life expectancy, which adds up to two years in your life total. We have one of the highest police use of deadly force rates in the country, the highest in 2015. We have one of the highest unemployment rates, one of the highest poverty rates, one of the worst public education systems. One of the highest crime rates in the country, and none of these are coincidences. All of these categories minus the air quality are directly linked. The states in this country which spend the most on criminal justice, law enforcement, incarceration, also spend the least on education and have the highest crime rates of all states in the country. And Bakersfield is not an exception to that, and the jury is not out on this one after 150 years of researching policies that get tougher and tougher and tougher on. that get tougher and tougher and tougher on crime. We have some solid answers. Our current way of fighting crime does not work. Seven out of ten prison inmates will be arrested for a new crime within three years of being released from prison. In some circumstances, it's up to ninety percent. Because our prison system does not rehabilitate these individuals. And everything I am saying is backed up by peer-reviewed research, and I like to think that my degree in this matter is a testament to that. Four out of ten people born in poverty will never leave poverty in their life, even temporarily. The most influential factor that determines whether or not someone leaves poverty is education. Wealth inequality and crime rates are two sides of the same coin. Cities with higher wealth and equality have higher crime rates. We have had a hundred and fifty years of the same outdated criminal justice system. It is time to try something new. I am here in support of at least partially defunding the BPD and allocating that money into education, mostly with a focus in disadvantaged neighborhoods and other funds going to mental health, drug rehabilitation, public transportation, and daycare. Our current system is unsustainable, it is ineffective, and has resulted in the unjust killings of countless Black or Brown lives. The gentleman over the speaker stated that some communities in Bakersfield feel like they, like they have not gone, like they have gone unheard. And I believe that I speak for them. When I say that we are tired of being terrorized by an organization whose salary is funded by our tax dollars. It is time that we stop asking. It's time that we stop asking law enforcement to solve issues that they don't understand. The front lines of crime are not fought on the street with a gun and a badge. They are fought in a classroom with a textbook and a whiteboard. Bakersfield's finances are not our law enforcement. They are, they are our educators. And frankly, I'm here simply as a courtesy to you. These changes will happen because they must happen. Please reallocate our tax funds accordingly. Comply with the Eight Can't Wait Campaign to reduce police brutality. Require all BPD new hires to have a BA in Criminal Justice at the very least, so that they know the impact of criminal law in certain communities, understand where crime comes from, and learn how to effectively rehabilitate criminal offenders. And justice for Robert Forbes. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas, I heard that there's a Nicholas who's trying to get in touch with me. Are you the one, somebody connected at Starbucks?
No.
Okay, thank you. Thanks very much, I've been looking for that person. Just have about a minute and a half. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed budget? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed budget? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing at this time and return it to staff for comment and action to council. At this point, let's see, Ms. Councilmember Rivera, and then we'll follow that with Councilmember Smith, and then Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. One item, and this is specifically in response to Mr. Lane's comments on the park front. I, I just want to, I guess, reaffirm what you heard from some of us on Monday as it related to, you know, exploring this park master plan. And I think it was even suggested we might even be able to talk about that in the context of this budget right now. I know we've got some time to work on that, and, and I do think it'd be helpful if at least we got to see some type of proposal or sometime, some type of breakdown of what that would look like, not suggesting that we can start that master plan now, because engaging the community, I think, is an important part, and we can't really do that very effectively right now. But I'd like to really ensure we're moving forward with that, and I know we talked about it two days ago, I just want to make sure it's still fresh in our minds and that, that we're running with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Smith? Maybe you need to unmute? There you are.
Okay. We've got two mutes, I mute and you mute, so we have to both get unmuted. My comments would be, I appreciate the Oversight Committee's work and their comments, and I would just like to reinforce Committee Member Tobias's comment that we received requesting staff and City Council to consider a cap to ongoing or reoccurring expenses funded by the measure. I think it's important that, that, you know, I don't know if it's a dollar amount or a percentage amount, but that we don't get to a point with Measure N where it's all committed with ongoing costs, that, that we leave room for flexibility and to address problems and capital improvements as they come up. So, I would just like to reinforce that comment. Also, on the Sierra Club's comments, I think it is important that we focus on the existing parks and make improvements to those parks. Again, quality of life is greatly affected by the quality of the parks that we have. And he mentioned the Uplands, and I took the City Manager Clegg by a week or so ago and, and, you know, showed him what terrible shape that is in. And there's definitely a need to go back in and spend capital money on improving existing parks. And so, I hope that we look more at that next year. Just to talk about Councilman Rivera's master plan, I don't know if that's the right term. I think more what, what I'm hearing is that we need to prioritize existing parks and how we're going to improve those and bring them up to the quality that they need to be. And that, that's a master plan, I mean, right? I don't want a master plan that says, you know, this is where we need to put new parks and stuff. I don't want a plan that says how we're going to prioritize improving parks that have been, have deferred maintenance and we need to get back into them. So, that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to piggyback on Councilmember Smith's comments. I too believe that Measure N requires a cap of staff so that we have those dollars available for capital projects in the future. And piggyback on Councilmember Rivera's comments, you know, I'd like to see before we adopt this budget, the list, whether it be the capital improvement project list or deferred maintenance list, whatever we call it, of all of those improvements that are required for existing parks today. And what does that whole comprehensive list actually look like? And I'm, I want to see that in the context of what we have budgeted here and now. You know, I want to thank Mr. Emilio for your comments as well. Clearly, if we want to reduce violence and crime in, in our community, we have to be much more proactive. And I think we need, that requires investments, whether it be into physical infrastructure, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, street lighting, or additional proactive steps. Those efforts are required as well. And so, I'd like us to really highlight some of those action steps in this year's budget for the community, so they can identify those, and that we can begin a conversation about, about future efforts and investments in next fiscal year's budget. And then finally, I had a question regarding the contingency items. So, if, if, Mr. Clegg, if you can describe the items that are identified as contingent items, will those come back to the council for approval again? Or when, or when we have a better sense of our financial outlook mid-year, will staff go ahead and spend those dollars?
Thanks, Councilmember, and Mayor and Council. The intent on the contingent projects is that they are identified now as, you know, projects of need and importance. We wouldn't move forward on those projects until we came forward at a mid-year and said, "Council, we believe that these, that revenues have been realized the way that we've anticipated them, so there will be a check-in point." It wasn't intended that we would sort of, you know, take that list and then revisit it entirely, just because it is, you know, an annual budgeting process and sometimes lengthy in that. That's not to say that there isn't some opportunity for reconsideration, but it wasn't intended to be a relook at all potential items. But we would definitely check in with council on where we're at on revenues before we move forward with those projects on January one.
Okay. Thank you for that. There, there's just two items that I'm kind of concerned about regarding the Mechanics Bank Arena Theater Convention Center. There's two capital projects. One is the upgrade to the Convention Center Trade Show Power System for two hundred and thirty thousand, and then the rigging safety upgrades. This is budgeted for thirty-five thousand. This is budgeted in the capital improvement project. Yet, we still have projects that we have funded that have not yet been realized. We have the painting of the N Street Pedestrian Bridge, the Convention Center Meeting Room upgrades. So, I'd like to request is that we move these proposed items into that contingent project bucket and not spend those dollars until we've completed the, the already budgeted capital projects for the Convention Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Are there any other requests to speak? Vice Mayor.
City Attorney, there's no required action on this, is there? Thank you.
Okay, next item, please, Madam Clerk.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivera.
I'll be quick. Three things. I want to thank staff for, again, that Cottonwood Annexation on this agenda. I didn't miss it, and I know that's been a long time coming. I want to thank them for putting forth the work in getting that done. That's on Cottonwood, an area that we've heard about today, an area that I think at the end of the day is going to be much better served when it's actually in the city of Bakersfield, so I'm excited to get that to Laughco and done, and hopefully we can move on to other areas along the Cottonwood corridor as well. I think Lily Parker's watching right now, so I got to give her a shout-out. We've got some money going to the Fourth Street Senior Center this evening in response to a request she received. And then if you've driven down Brundage Lane at all over the course of the last few years, you would have known it's needed a lot of tender love and care. And we actually just approved a two-point-seven million dollar rehabilitation project on Brundage Lane that is much, much needed, and I'm very excited it's coming to southeast Bakersfield. That's it, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Not as quick as Councilmember Rivera, sorry about that. I have a few referrals tonight. Number one, I'd like to ask staff to review Municipal Code Section one seven point five eight point one two zero to clarify the language, to ensure the parking requirements in that section apply to all uses and not just mixed uses. I'd also like to make a referral that we, that we get an update as a council on the neighborhood improvement plans for the M Street Navigation Center. And then finally, that we draft a letter to the county requesting that they open additional beds at that M Street facility. As a funder, those, those beds are much needed at the time, at this time. And I'd finally like to close, just noting, you know, the tragic and unjust murder of George Floyd has sparked nationwide protests that we've seen. There's been a broad and national discussion about police reform over the last two weeks. And locally, we've received a number of requests for the BPD, for the BPD to reform. And I do believe that there has been a significant amount of effort that has been done to reform the Bakersfield Police Department, but I also know that we can always improve and get better. And, and so, I'd kind of like to make a few referrals for staff tonight. First is that the City Manager and the Chief develop a document that clearly communicates to the public the policies and practices that we've changed over the last three and a half years within the Bakersfield Police Department, that, that meets our, I think, community's goals. Second, I'd like to ask the City Manager and the Chief to review and analyze the Eight Can't Wait policy recommendations that have been presented nationwide, and develop an action plan to present to the council within the next thirty days. And then finally, I'd like us to, like the City Manager and the Chief to develop a six-month-long task force made up of community members to review the various policy recommendations that are being made currently in the community. This is a, I think, a vehicle for, for those policies to be evaluated, for community members to learn more in depth of what policies and practices have already been implemented, and then also to develop an action plan with the Chief and the City Manager for the future. And then lastly, I'd like to make a referral to the Safe Neighborhoods Committee that we begin developing a violence prevention strategy, because clearly, we can't put on the shoulders of the Bakersfield Police Department to create a safe and vibrant community. That, it's much more than that, it requires investment. And so, I'd like us to, to look at a more proactive strategy to really create safe and vibrant neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I echo Andre's comments. Good list, Andre. Okay, also, I want to, I appreciate the, the school principal coming tonight handing out this, this flyer on hen, hen friendliness. Okay, this issue was worked on maybe ten years ago. I would like it researched, so I can remember how long ago it was that we did work on this issue. I was, at that time, we were calling them chickens. Hens are, are a better, a better name. But I was strongly in favor of this at that time. And in fact, the, I remember very well, and I can't remember the name, but the owner, the, the husband of the owner of the Bakersfield Californian called me and said that he was, you know, he had fragile health, and he got his eggs way east of town, happy to do so, but he was in favor of being able to, to raise his own, you know, produce his own eggs. And we really, we, we did, Jenny did some good work on that. We, we, we realized what other, what other cities were doing, and, and we got some good guidelines. Had to be so far away from a certain distance away from the neighbor, the, the fence, the adjoining neighbor's fence. And so, I, you know, the, the fellow that came, he listed the benefits, but also education. How fun for, for children to know how, where we get our eggs, you know, just, just what, what makes an egg and where it comes from. So, I, I do, if, if that can be sent to the Legend Lit Committee, that, that will be good work for that committee to work on.
If I may, Councilmember Sullivan, through the chair into the council, Councilmember Smith has recently made a referral on this topic, and staff has been doing the research and pulling up the homework from years past. The referral from Councilmember Smith was to bring this item back as a council workshop, and so, we can take into account, you know, both of those recommendations. Perhaps the two of you could work together in determining, you know, the best way to bring this forward. But we have been starting to do that homework based on a referral from Councilmember Smith.
Okay, great. I'm remembering now that he was also in favor. But it's, I, I think people were visualizing chickens all over, you know, all over front yards and running, running free. No, it would be, it would be very, very, very well-controlled and, so, anyway, I'm delighted. I think it's, it's something that is a benefit, and so, I appreciate that. Okay, several other things. I think it's too cold in here. Let's, let's see what the temperature is, and maybe consider putting it two degrees higher. I, I think maybe it's in the low sixties maybe in here right now. And that might be an exaggeration, but it's definitely, it's definitely colder than, than it needs to be, in my opinion. Okay, let's see, well, good. I appreciate the young man that was here tonight. He was very touched, and he certainly, he, you've, you've touched all of us, so. And at the same time, we appreciate our police officers. I think we- I think we, you know, they're just, I think, really, we've had demonstrations and they've, they've become, I think for the most part, our residents, our citizens realize that we bend over backwards, but we can always, like it was mentioned, we can always do better. So we're open for ways that all of us as individuals, we can always do better, be better, and we, we need to, we need to welcome things that can help that to happen. So let's see. Okay, I think that we had a good meeting, some serious issues were mentioned and taken to heart. So I think we work well together, we certainly want what is best for our city, and so, anyway, I'll leave it at that, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things to follow up on Councilmember Sullivan's hen's request. I think staff was working to come to council in July with that workshop and to kind of look at what other cities have done and responses, and they have that workshop in July, so I hope we can continue to move forward in that direction. On Councilmember Gonzalez's request, I agree, we need to move forward even more on the "eight can't wait," but I think the community needs to understand that we have realized some years ago and have been moving forward on changing the culture in the police department. I personally went to what they call principal policing, and a lot of discussion on implicit bias and recognizing that we all have implicit bias and working through that. And I think it's important that we reach out to the community, let them know where we're at, and continue to change, and so I think that's good. There was one comment that the gentleman made about, you know, the route out of poverty is education, and unfortunately, we don't have any control of the education status right. I think it's important for the community to understand, you know, there are things that we can do, we can work on the police department, we can work on economic development, you know, route out poverty is having available jobs also, and so that's part of the economic development plan that we're working on. But, you know, when it comes to education, that's something we don't have any say in, and so there's not much we can do there. So, again, I appreciate the feedback and look forward to moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. I don't see any other requests to speak. Thank you to all of you who were here tonight, some of you stayed the entire time, so thank you for engaging. I know some of you who were out there letting your voices be heard this last week, you did what we talked about, and you're engaging, you're coming to listen and learn, and we really appreciate that. You're welcome back anytime. Thank you to all of you and to our police officers, thank you so much for your service, we appreciate it. And so with that, we're adjourned at 7:59.